Good evening. It's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We ask if you have your cellphones, please put them on silence. We would appreciate that. First order of business is, Abby, can you call the roll?
Um...
We've called the meeting to order. We would like some quiet, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Steeler.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Commissioner Kubal.
Here.
Chair Gerard.
Here.
We're asking for able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. The chair will make that motion, and the chair would respectfully request that item 5B be pulled from the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
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 Chair is looking for a motion to approve 5A of the consent agenda. So moved. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
Motion carries. Item 5B is resolution number 042-26-23-01, 1098 and 1148 Broadway Avenue West for Mr. Carwash Site Plan Review. I've asked for this to be reviewed due to the large pylon sign on the structure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would you like me to go through the whole report or just focus on the sign?
I would appreciate an overview on the report, please.
Sure.
But I bother the chair.
That would be fine. We don't need every detail, but the biggies.
All right. So the request is for site plan review, which also includes building review, sign review, architectural review for this site that's on the screen for a new project called Mr. Carwash. It would be a car wash, funny enough. It's two properties now. Formerly had a strip center in it that will be combined and developed. And find the right map. Into a car wash facility. Get to that. There we go. It would, I'm going to enlarge this a little bit. One more. Okay, there we go. Be two entrances on Broadway Avenue, an exit, be a right out in this location, and a new entrance here. This is the car wash tunnel as it's described. Vehicles would come in off of Broadway. There's three queuing lanes, and then there's pay stations here. Scroll this down. The vehicles would move through the pay stations, and as I understand, there's a membership you could pay, and then you get a, you can have unlimited washes per month. Can go, you have a choice, saying you can go into the car wash, go through, or continue by, and if the car wash, and if you want to go around here. These are all outdoor vacuum stations where you can vacuum your car. As part of the plan, they are also showing a access driveway to the south to an existing parking lot and driveway that goes out to 12th, and that access has been negotiated with that property owner for their use. A little bit of background for everyone that's looking at this. This process, this project's probably been in the works for more than a year with the city, and there was a couple of major issues they had to work through. One was the access onto Broadway and how that would work with the county, what the county would accept or not accept, and they worked through that, and the county is agreeable to this plan, especially with the driveway out to the southwest that I showed you. They are also proposing a lot of directional signage on the site so vehicles know which way to go and how to get in and out of the site. The second issue is regarding utilities. Now, I'll go to that plan here. Ah, one more, I think. Yeah. It's somewhat amazing, for lack of a better term. Here's, the sewer and water are on this end of the site, and they cross through the middle of the site over to this side and bisect the site generally southeast to northwest, and they're in a 30-foot wide range of utility easement. Can't put a new building on top of those utilities and over the utility lines and the easement area. So the applicant's engineers have been working for many months to try to figure out alternative routing of the utilities, and many ideas and back and forth with our city engineers. What they have come up with is routing them, both sewer and water, around the south end of the site, and then again down that driveway, and then turning and going out to 12th this way. So the developer applicant owner will be doing all the rerouting, all the installation of the new utilities at their expense as part of the project, and then they are asking, and they will be dedicating new easements to the city for those utilities, and as part of the approvals, and they also need to plat the property because it's the two lots, they will be asking the city to vacate the existing easements. These utilities under the site will either be abandoned in place or removed depending on what the final design is with the engineers. So that has been a second element of design challenges that they have worked through. Our city engineer, our city public works director are generally supportive of this plan, so that's why we've brought it to you at this point. We and the applicant frankly weren't real comfortable before this point bringing a plan forward because of the unknowns. Those had been worked out, so that's the good news on that. As far as signage, that is on page four of your report. I think I included the sign package here. There we go. Mr. Carwash is proposing, not surprisingly, many signs, and this is the one Commissioner Gerard was commenting on. This would be out near Broadway. It's a big, what I would call a big monument sign. It's architecturally better than a standing pylon sign on a single post. It does have a stone base. The base is generally the width of the entire sign. It's shown to be about 25 feet tall, and parts of the building are 25 to 30 feet high, depending on the parapets and the different elevations because the building does have lots of different looks, and roof lines and elevations for their particular design. A correction I should make on the staff report. I called it a pylon sign, and in fact, here they identified it as a pylon sign, and really in our code, it's a monument sign or a freestanding sign because it's not on a single pylon, a single post. It is integrated design, full width with the base. So that was my error, but in my opinion, this does meet our sign code requirements because it is a monument or freestanding sign and not a pylon sign by definition. Ah, let's see. The one thing I'll touch on too, the fire chief had concerns about this car wash and the length of the car wash. It's 160 feet, and he has asked, and they've agreed to install some kind of an access door on the side of the building near the midpoint, so firefighters, if they need to get into it, they can because he doesn't want to drag hoses 80 or 90 feet down the car wash one way or another if there's a car fire or some other type of fire within the structure. And again, they think they've got that worked out. That's one of those final design elements that we'll need to see in the final plan. So with all that said, we are recommending approval of the site plan and the building plans, which again include the architectural and the sign plans for Mr. Carwash, and that's subject to 19 conditions proposed by staff. There's resolution 4-262301 for your consideration for the project. I know the applicant's engineers here answer questions if they have any. This is not scheduled as a public hearing, but they are available as well. And with that, I'll stop and take questions.
Questions? Susan?
There's a shared access that you mentioned earlier. Is that going to be a deeded shared access so that there...
The one to...
We've had challenges with shared accesses in the past.
This one to the south?
Yes.
That has not been discussed. So at this point, no.
There's a shared access.
Yeah, but not a gate. Are you asking if it'd be gated and closed off?
I'm more, that is one of the main accesses to the property, so it wouldn't be gated, would it?
No, no.
So what my concern is, if in the future, the adjacent property owner who's sharing that says, "No, no more. We're going to do something else with our property," what happens to that shared access?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question. They have already secured an access easement agreement with this property owner, bought and paid for.
It is a permanent deeded access.
Yes.
Okay. Second, there's a lot of this site that is not part of the development. There's a fair amount of vacancy. Do you expect that there will be something to either split that lot a different way, realizing it is two lots now that you're merging into one for a future something else?
Are you referring kind of in this northeast corner primarily?
Yeah.
Uh, no. Uh, and really, if you look here, there's only about a 40-foot strip, maybe 50-foot strip of land here that's vacant. Otherwise, it's pretty well filled in, and then there cannot be anything built on top of these utilities except parking, so there's no, I can't foresee that happening unless Speedway to the east wants to acquire a little land for something.
Okay.
Other questions? Susan?
Is there a reason they believe they need three pylon signs?
They only have one pylon, this one.
I thought was...
It's two, it's two-sided.
Okay.
And then all the other signs are wall signs.
Okay. That is a lot of signs.
Well, they have some short stubby entrance and exit signs.
Yeah, those are direct, what I call directional signs that, and those were required actually by Washington County to help ensure traffic flow flows the way it should.
Yeah, if coming from the lake side of the city heading west, are people going to be able to take left turns into that entrance of the car wash?
Hmm, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no. They have to go down to the stoplight and do a U-turn and come back.
Okay, but there's no barrier preventing them from turning if they go against the law, right?
I think there's a median.
There is a median in there?
Yeah, there's a median, yeah, right here. There's a median in Broadway here. What I think we're hoping is they will go down to the stoplight and go down 12th and come in that new driveway to the south rather than doing a U-turn. Because, here, let me scroll down.
If they do that, then how do they get into the, get into the line? Because that's completely on the other side of the building.
Right. You'd come in this way, come up into the car wash property. It's two-way traffic, and then you can, you'd have to go all the way around the building. I guess you would have, I'm sorry, you would have to go out on Broadway and then come back and come in.
Now, I actually find U-turns very, very hazardous for a lot of reasons, and I'd actually like to make it, if the availability for U-turns is there, no U-turn because I think we're asking for accidents to happen, especially with people trying to get to a car wash, and things might just back up there anyway, but I just don't like, I don't like U-turns at all.
Well, that, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's something we can ask Washington County about. That's really, it'll be their decision because they're, it's Broadway's County Road, and they're the traffic people that have been working through this with the applicant.
Other questions, staff?
I have two questions, Ken. I thought our ordinance, we had a limit on the amount of signs you could have on a building.
They're right at the limit.
Six is the limit.
Because of all the, all the sides and all the views they have.
Okay, and then I thought there was also a limit on the height of our monument signs, and what is that currently?
It's, it relates to the height of the building, and there's parts of the building that are at 25 feet, and a couple of parts go up to 30 feet, and the sign is proposed at 25 feet. So again, they're right at the number.
And if I'm looking correctly, that sign is about 10 feet wide.
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the top is, yes.
My, my opinion is that this sign is too tall. As we look at, all the other businesses have been built in the last 15, 20 years, Walgreens, Culvers, even, even TCF, Lord Durs, and they went to a small monument. There's, there's really nothing that tall except I think it's Perkins' ancient pylon sign there, and even the brand-new one, which is Starbucks and whatnot, they have a monument sign there for their three businesses. I'm not exactly sure on, the ordinance states that it starts at the roof line, but it also states if it's a multi-story building, then it starts at what would normally be the end of a floor. So to me, if you're going to tell me I got a 30-foot building, I'm saying I got a two-story, and so we got to be down lower. So I think this sign needs to go down to some reasonable number. I don't know what that number is. 12 feet. Susan, you'll throw a number out there.
I guess the reason they get the size and the height is because of the two, I call them turrets, either end, that, are they functional or are they just decorative turrets to increase the height of the building to achieve the signage they're looking for?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I, as far as I know, they're decorative, but I think the applicant would tell you that's their building style, and they use that design everywhere in the country. But, I, when I looked at the building plans, and I've got those here too someplace, I, when I measured, here, this will show it. When I was looking at those, the building height, ah, to this point, zoom in. Yeah, this is up to 35 feet at this point, and this parapet is at 25.9. This ridge here is 25.8, so it's a tall building, not even counting this. So I was comfortable saying the 25 feet is at this height. That was the basis for why I was considering 25 feet.
Okay. Other comments? I believe the applicant's here.
Yeah, I know, I know there's representatives here.
The applicant wish to come forward and maybe explain to us why you're looking for such a tall sign when we're, I think for the most part, we're looking for a shorter sign there. I'd ask you to state your name and address for the record and also sign the log, please.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Sam Glenn, and I work for the Mr. Carwash Real Estate Development Team locally here in Minneapolis. My address is 3650 Annapolis Lane in Plymouth. Regarding the pylon sign, this is our national prototype that we're rolling out. We're 440 stores strong in the US right now. We've been in Minnesota for quite some time. You've seen a lot of our older stores in the Minneapolis area, but this is one of our bright, shiny new pennies, one of the first new ones to open in this market. So we designed, I guess, our pylon sign around the sign code to answer your question directly. If, I know you mentioned the goal is to get it smaller. If there is a number you have in mind, we're willing to discuss. We don't design our building heights around getting the, you know, the biggest sign we can get. Our building is that tall. Did all the equipment that's, that's moving up and down inside. There's a lot of mechanical equipment on the rooftop, so that plays into the height of the building. But if there is a number you're looking for on the pylon sign, we're certainly willing to engage in that conversation. Again, we just, we built it around the code that we saw in the city.
You know, and we'll be honest, signs are going to be the death of everyone up on this commission.
No, I understand.
You guys always want them bigger. We always want them smaller.
Yeah.
Do you have car washes in the Woodlands, Texas?
We have a pretty large presence in Texas. I'm not sure if we're in the Woodlands.
Because they don't allow any of these kind of signs. I was curious what you had there.
Yeah. We're building one now. Our engineer says.
You know how tall the pylon is there? Because they don't allow anything from the street.
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. Questions to the applicant? You know, I'd like to give you a number, but I don't know how tall those other ones are, but I'd like to be in that ballpark, so...
Okay. Well, we're happy to work with city staff and Ken to come to an agreement on that, if that's a condition of the approval. Happy to.
Ken, would that work for you?
Absolutely.
All right. Off the top of my head, 12 feet to sound in the ballpark.
One of the challenges of a community like Forest Lake, that we've worked very hard on our branding, we've worked very hard to be friendly to businesses in the community, but also to be more than the fast food off the highway.
Sure.
And as I'm looking at this, it's, "Hi, welcome to Mr. Carwash." Oh, there's a city And that is something that I would like to avoid.
Understood.
On the flip side, welcome to Forest Lake.
Thank you. We're very excited to be here, and thank you for hearing about our project tonight.
And, and I have huge kudos because this has been a freaking challenging location.
It's been one of the more challenging ones we've designed, yes.
And Ken, you know why that sewer line goes there?
I don't. I've wondered.
It used to be, that's where Broadway went. That used to be the direction of Broadway, and when they brought 35 is when they squared it off. But Broadway used to cut diagonally across what was then the top of the city.
Wow, you were just wealthy information.
Didn't move the utilities.
Uh, not back then.
Think about how expensive, I mean...
Understood.
And I, any other issues with this application? So do we have to change anything on the resolution, or are we good?
Mr. Chair, the resolution does include the sign approval, so if you want to add a condition about working with staff on a final sign design or something acceptable to the city, just to put that, I'm just quick looking at the resolution myself to see if there's a way to either work it into a condition or add it as a separate condition.
Number 16 is the one that deals with the signs?
Yeah, that's requiring the sign permits, but if you wanted to add a second sentence onto that, that would probably work. And just for my clarification, is the height of the sign, is that the primary concern?
That's the only concern I have.
What's the current height?
25 feet.
25, apparently.
They're going to be within the setbacks on file. It's a wide sign at 10, but it's, we got a lot that are about 8 or 9, so I can live with that.
But, you know, the rest of the sign will scale down to be proportional to the height.
You don't think they'll just whack that middle section?
City staff will make sure that it, that it fits our community.
Um, I would say in item 16, city staff and applicant to work out sign height of monument sign.
Do you want to put in a not to exceed number, or are you going to trust me?
Well, we're kicking around 12, 15 feet, I think.
I think Abby had, did you want to?
Nope.
Okay, never mind.
Ballpark for you?
I'll defer to the commission to what they think is reasonable and fits with the character of the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, Abby, I didn't hear all of that.
I said I defer to the commission to conditions they think are appropriate to conform to the character of the neighborhood.
All right, I'll take that.
So essentially, here's what I wrote down for adding on 16. The applicant should work with city staff on the final sign height, or final height of the sign.
To fit in the neighborhood.
Got it?
If I might, Chair Gerard, just looking at the front elevation of the building, knowing that the building isn't a two-story building, you do have a kind of first floor height of 10 to 12 feet, or even 18 to the low end of the arched parapet. The commission may want to have a limitation around there since it is kind of still consistent with the code's requirement not to exceed that roof line requirement, so...
So what number?
15 feet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other changes that the city would like?
No, we thought it was great, so...
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve resolution number 04-26-23-01 for building Mr. Carwash facility at the property located 1148 Broadway Avenue North.
He hasn't amended.
Has amended.
Second.
Who was the first I didn't catch?
I was looking for a motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion for resolution 04-26-23-01 with the 19 conditions and the five amendments and the amendment on line 16 for the staff to work with the developer for a sign height not to exceed 15 feet.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You have a second, sir.
I have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Welcome to Forest Lake.
Thank you.
Item number 6A is a public hearing for 23850 Inwood Court North. It's a setback variance. The way this will work tonight, and there's three public hearings, and they'll all work the same this evening, the staff will present the application as they understand it. They have one third finished. This planning commission will ask any clarification questions that they need. We will then ask the applicant if they would wish to add anything to the presentation or make sure that we understand it as, from your point of view also. After that, we will have the public hearing. I will give further instruction on the public hearing, but we'll invite anyone who wants to speak to this application. We welcome your, your input. After the public hearing completes, it'll come back to the planning commission for a decision. So with that, I believe Ken, you're presenting?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And just to clarify, there's a revised or updated report that we sent out yesterday, so that's what I'll be working off this evening, and I think you all have a printed copy as well. The request for this application this evening is for the property shown on the screen on Inwood Court. It's 23850 Inwood Court. It's for front yard and side yard setback variances. And zoom down to the plans. Now, this shows a property in a little more detail. Has a single-family home with an attached garage, and it's on about 2.9... a attached garage, and it's on about 2.9 acres, and they are proposing to build a detached garage in this location in the northwest corner of the lot. And this plan will show it, and I will rotate it here, so we don't get it crink in our necks. Click. There we go. So the proposed building, again, in this location, would be 26 by 42, and as proposed, it requires two setback variances that they've requested. They are proposing to have it about 11.4 feet from the right-of-way. Code requires 100-foot setback in this rural residential zoning district for accessory buildings, and they're proposing to have a 10-feet off the sideline, and the code requires a 20-foot setback, again, in this zoning district. Excuse me, so two variance requests for this proposal. This, I'll zoom, get a little better detail. So as I started indicating, excuse me, property has the driveway coming in with the house, attached garage, their septic system is here with its drain field, and the well for the property is in this location. And originally, the first report you may have seen, if you're diligent and looked at your packet Friday or Saturday, we were recommending tabling this to allow us to get more information. It was primarily a Ron septic, what could be done, what should be done, that kind of thing. And what we found out through our research and working with Washington County, is this property never had a secondary site for septic identified, which is surprising, and staff raised the concern of, might this area where the proposed garage is going to go, proposed to go, be a good fit for a secondary system? I had, the applicants had soil testing done, and it shows this darker area here, has undisturbed soils that should be suitable for a secondary septic system. However, it is on a sideslope, and that creates its own set of challenges. It's not the preferred way that Washington County would like a septic, or to put a septic in. And so the question came up about, well, would the building site work? And that site has its own challenges, because it would be a mound system that would be about 40 by 80, and I don't think I included a drawing of it, but that would cover a large portion of this area, and it would go over part of the existing system. So those soils have already been disturbed, and are not ideal for putting in a mound, and new systems now, which I learned, are required to have three tanks, not just one. And to fit the three tanks in, and to keep all elements of that mound 50 feet away from the well, it might be able to be done, but the septic installer was doubtful, that that could all fit, and meet that 50-foot setback from the well. And again, going over this existing septic is not the best. So in his professional opinion, and I spoke to him several times on this, even though this has a slope, and I talked to Washington County about this, there are ways to design a system on side slopes, certainly of less than 18 percent, and even up to 25 percent slopes in extreme cases. It's his opinion, because of these undisturbed soils, and the restraints on the west side of the driveway, that this would be a better site for a secondary system, if and when, and eventually it'll probably be needed. So in my, so that kind of, that answered the septic question in my mind. Okay, septic can't go here, or not very easily, it wouldn't be a good fit. So now we're back to the variances, and the question is, does this building with this proposed setback meet the city's criteria for variances? And as you know, and we've seen several of these, there's several findings of fact that we look at when reviewing variance requests. And a lot of them deal with the physical surroundings, the topography, existing conditions. These current owners are the third owners of the property, so they didn't, clearly they didn't create the topography, they didn't create the lot layout, so none of those factors are of their doing, and so really, it comes down to, is this a reasonable request to have a secondary, or to have a detached building? And if so, are the setback variances that they're requesting reasonable, and are there practical difficulties in fitting a site, a building in? One thing I'll point out, too, is they really can't shift the building any farther south, because it has to be at least 10 feet away from the existing septic, which is shown here. So their building pad is really this area. I'm not too concerned about the 10-foot setback from the west, because that's 115-acre conservancy area that'll never be developed, certainly no impact to that property. You can certainly make a case about, is 11.4 feet enough setback away from a right-of-way? Eventually, this will have a driveway going out to the cul-de-sac, being, if we look back at a map... Yeah, I gotta rotate these, but I can do that. Go back to these maps. The property being at the end of the cul-de-sac, again, this is a conservancy area there, where, as I understand it, the owners use it for deer hunting and maybe playtime, but because of all the wetlands, it's not going to be developed. It's, the location of the garage here is certainly not gonna have any negative impact on any of the neighbors. Could it be smaller? Could it be moved? Maybe a little bit, but we'll get back to the site plan, again, which, going back to this drawing again. Is, does it really fit the goals and policies and variance criteria in the code? And I outlined what I felt were reasons to support the variance, and there's the findings there for your consideration. So the revised recommendation, which is on page 5 of your report, includes a resolution we're recommending approval of the two variances as shown, subject to the seven conditions, so it's resolution 4262303. One thing I'll point out, we've included a condition seven, that with this approval, the applicant property owner acknowledges the city is not responsible for any damage to their property because of snow storage, or flooding, or drainage from the public street, because this does drop down about three feet below the pavement, and the concern was raised, well, snow gets piled up here and it runs off, because it's gonna run right into the building. We also are requesting a revised grading plan to show how the water will move around the building pad, and not dump onto the neighbor's property, but yet try to direct it around the building to minimize those concerns. So that's staff's recommendation, I'll stop with that, take questions, the applicant is here as well, and I believe there's some interested neighbors as well.
Questions of staff?
Susan? How are they planning on getting in and out of this garage? Are they going to, they getting in and out, the short end or the long end? And if it's the long end, how are they avoiding driving on that drain field?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there will be an overhead door on this north side, and just a service door on this side.
Dan?
Similar question in mind, but under our guidelines, a property can have two driveways? There's no restriction to that? I, it just seemed odd to me, but I don't know.
That is correct, Commissioner Sealer, we do not restrict the, limit the number of driveways to a property.
Counties, we don't.
They do have to be approved by city staff, and our public director would be involved with that.
Other questions? Ken, on the, as, it's up here on the left side, the red circle detail, what is there currently? Is there a smaller garage, or...
I believe it used to have a trailer park there, if you see on the aerial photo, there's a white roof, but there's nothing, there's no structure or anything there, nothing permanent.
I don't drive back there, because I get lost.
Me too, Chair, I did it last evening, I think I ended up in like, I don't know, but I was in a different county, I'm pretty sure.
Other questions of staff? I understand the applicant is here, is there anything you would like to add? Welcome you to come up, state your name and address for the record, and also please write your name and address into the log there, so...
Joel Dorn, 23850 Inwood Court North, Forest Lake. I appreciate your time, I'm here to answer any questions. And that was a camper that I sold, that was parked in that location, so that is no longer there.
So Google doesn't lie.
Absolutely, big brother. And I'm here with my neighbors to the west, and a neighbor to the south.
Okay. Questions to the applicant?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, if we weren't to approve this, and I'm not saying I wouldn't vote that way, but why this size? Why not smaller, to be within the setbacks? What functionally wants you to go this large?
Quite honestly, ma'am, I couldn't build a building of any size to be within that 100-foot setback. If I, maybe a 10-foot deep building, I don't know the exact size, but it would be very, very small. It's a storage issue right now, just vehicles, growing family, baby, so just running out of space.
Other questions to the applicant?
What's the height?
I believe it was gonna be 10-foot interior walls.
Is this, as I recall in the application, you're building a garage and not a pole barn?
That's correct, sir.
So it'll match the house?
Correct.
Other questions to the applicant?
In that cul-de-sac, there is no place for snow storage, except right in front of your brand-new little driveway.
The snowplow guys I've worked with in the past, and they do a pretty good job, because there is a gate that goes to the west into my neighbor's property, and they've been pretty decent to not stack up snow. Mistakenly, I kept my camper on the street one year, because I just didn't know I couldn't. They were pretty decent to not pile up snow there, so that area was cleared.
Well, thank you for coming up, we may have questions for you later.
Sir.
This is a public hearing, we ask if you wish to speak to this issue, come up, state your name and address, and write your name and address down in our log, spend a couple minutes telling us what you think of the application. Once we have heard from everybody, we will then close the public hearing, and it'll come back to the commission for a final decision. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:43 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue?
I do.
Welcome.
My name is Brad Nelson, I live at 8460 235th Street North. I'm the neighbor right to the south, and Joel's been a fine neighbor, his house is always kept up, his property's always kept up. I'm certain if he's putting in a garage, I will barely be able to see it from my property. It'll do nothing but improve his property value and mine. He'll pay more taxes, so will I, I mean, it's a win all the way around. I mean, I don't know what the problem would be. And he's just been a fine, he's been a fine gentleman to live next to, and I would suggest that, yeah, he's got no other place over there to put it, I was over there and looked, he showed me, you know, there's wetlands he's gotta take into consideration. They put in, the owner before him put in geothermal out there, and you can't do it there. So it's the only place he has, and he's got a growing family, and I hate to have to see him move to get more storage. I mean, it just, you know, he's a fine man to live next to, and I just wish you would approve it for him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Abby, do we have anyone online, or any emails to be read into the record?
Let me just see really quick.
I have not gotten any emails, or no, myself.
No, we have not, we do have one person on the meeting with us, it is City Councilor Leif Erickson, I'm assuming it's City Councilor Leif Erickson. I don't know if he's here to talk about that. If you are, would you unmute?
And if, when we get people who are here, it comes from the ceiling, it might jolt you a little bit, so...
Good evening, yeah, this is City Councilmember Leif Erickson, and I am not here to speak to this issue, so thank you.
Okay, thanks, Leif.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this application? Anyone else online in the last 30 seconds?
No, sir, no.
See, no one come forward, and no one else being online, no emails to be read into the record. We'll close the public hearing at 7:46 PM. Commissioners, what is your wishes? Geneva?
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution 42623-03 with the seven conditions.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Not? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So we are the, the planning commission is the final decision on a variance, unless there is someone who has a counter opinion, and would like to appeal this decision. They have one week, and there's a, they have to write a check also, to let city staff know. No one comes forth in seven days, and the variance stands as is. So good luck on your project, thank you for living in Forest Lake.
Thank you.
Item 6B is a public hearing for resolution 042623-02 for 9860 to 10066, 180th Street North.
Now we're awake.
Is that us? Okay. Where was I?
We were introducing the item.
Northern Gas, natural gas for a floodplain conditional use permit. I believe, Abby, you're presenting?
I am, thank you, Chair Gerard. Northern Natural Gas, the applicant in this circumstance has applied, is proposing to construct a loop to their existing interstate natural gas transmission line. So just for reference, a loop is a parallel line to an existing line, so we have an interstate pipeline that does run on the southern border of the city, and what they would be looking to do is create another line that's running parallel to, it's actually two lines that are running south. Just for reference, this is about the boundary of the city, and the boundary between this, at the farthest southeast corner of the city, so Forest Lake is up over here, hold on just one second, I'll do my, Scandia's over here, Hugo's over here, and May Township's over here. Got it. Only took me a year, right? We don't work that often in the southeast corner of the city.
No.
So it's a, pardon?
I know.
Right? We don't, there's not, there's just not a whole lot of action down there. So the intent is to provide greater capacity to the area in quest, or to the area being, ooh, there's an air, oops. So there's a current facility in Hugo, this line would run from that Hugo sub, generating station, I'm not exactly too sure, come up and over, this is the city limit here, it'll cross multiple properties within the city limit, and it will directional bore underneath a water body within the city limits. So here we see it heading underneath that water body, and coming through into this location here. It's, like I said, it's gonna span several properties, and be installed under the lake, and it does require a conditional use permit. So the CUP in the staff report notes that it's required for the utility line in the floodway. However, there has been concerns raised recently about a conditional use permit required potentially for the fencing around the valving station that's being proposed at the inner, at the end line, that's gonna connect the existing facilities to the new facility. So I'm just gonna show... So I'm just going to show that area really quickly. This is wholly located on private property just at the northeast intersection of July Avenue and 180th Street. It'll be a, an enclosure, a fenced-in enclosure that'll be about forty-five feet north-south. And if I remember right, thirty feet? Thirty feet east-west. Somewhere right around there. The project's going to require clearing of vegetation a hundred feet wide within the working area, that trenching outside of the, where possible. But then that horizontal directional boring is going to be occurring within the floodplain and underneath the lake bed. The construction of the valve setting near the intersection of July Avenue, that's up on there for you. And then also restoration of vegetation in the temporarily disturbed areas. Just so you know, this is regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They have been seeking permits through that body. They have also been seeking permits through the watershed district. However, the property does not require a DNR permit, so the local permitting authority would be us in the watershed district. Otherwise, they'd be working with the federal authorities. It does not meet a threshold for needing an environmental assessment worksheet or an EIA. I don't want to say that it doesn't meet the, for the requirement for an EIS. The applicants can comment that. They have been going through their environmental studies prior to submission of this requirement. The project is consistent with the existing zoning district. The, as I noted, the vegetation re-mile will, will occur probably about a rough, roughly two-thirds of a mile. That vegetation is allowed in our shoreline area and within the city for utility connections. They are not required to put in new trees or anything that might need to be removed. But as a condition of approval, which we can apply to conditional use permits, anything that's reasonable, what we're asking for is vegetation re-establishment, stabilizing the shoreline in those areas if there's damage. Though there are no necessarily traffic impacts from traffic generated through here, there, concern has been raised by public safety about the potential for impact to the valving station. And so staff is recommending a condition of approval for a guardrail inside the fencing area that would, would stop a fifteen-five mile an hour crash. The valving station is pretty close to the July and 180th intersection, and there's just concern for life, health, safety in the area. Engineering comments, public works comments really do center around just following all the necessary permitting requirements for shoreline, for the watershed district, et cetera. There was a neighborhood meeting held here at City Hall last, last week? Two weeks ago now. Some of the comments that were brought up just by the neighbors was how, how they monitor gas flow in the pipe, whether or not additional gas services could be provided in the area. Because right now, this isn't actually servicing. The folks in the area don't have natural gas service. And then just in general, some of the dangers potentially to the residents within the, the neighborhood. I will know that I did reach out to XL Energy after this application was submitted just to talk at least about gas service in the southeast corner of the city. Gas service is based on this kind of calculation of what is the cost to get the service to those properties? And whether or not there's kind of that trade-off of the cost-benefit analysis. I do have contact information for anybody that's willing to want to talk with XL Energy about the extension. There is likely going to be a required cost share between property owners and XL Energy if the extension was desired to those properties. Staff does go through, as well as our consultant that helped us with this, the conditional or criteria for approval of the CUP and the work within a floodplain. As noted in the staff report, staff does find that this project substantially conforms to the requirements set forth in a CUP. In discussions today with legal counsel and the applicant, there has been just some concerns about the CUP in the floodplain, also including language for CUP for the valving station and fencing. And so one of the things that staff is asking you to consider is to table it tonight, to give staff additional time to work with the applicant and our legal counsel on appropriate language that not only protects the city's approval and future, the public's future interest in this, but also the applicant's land use rights, so that we're all comfortable with the approval language or the approval documents that get recorded against these properties. I do know the applicant's representative, Stephen Martinez, is here tonight. If you have any questions for me or him, I think we're happy to help answer them however we can.
Questions of staff? I just have one, Abby. Where is this, you know, it's a pretty busy picture you just had. Where's this guardrail going? Is that on the curve right there?
It would be inside their fenced line. So this is the travel path of July Avenue. And this is the edge of the road where 180th meet. There's an existing driveway that they would be utilizing to access into the site. And those guardrails would be on the inside of the fenced-in area.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none. Would the applicant wish to add anything to this proposal? Your application?
Mr. Chair, we have no additional comments unless you have comments from the staff.
Is that peaking station yours too?
Hold on. Sir, can I ask you to come up and state your name and address for the record? And write your name and address down so we all have an accurate.
Excuse the interruption.
No, no, no. I was out there.
Stephen Martinez with Northern Natural Gas, 1120 Center Point Drive, Mendota Heights, Minnesota, Suite 400.
That's your peaking station also down there, correct?
I'm sorry, you said pigging station?
Peeking. Y'all have, have a station down there?
The one in Hugo.
The one in Hugo is Northern Natural Gas.
Yeah, that, correct. It's a compressor station, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's yours also on Dell? So that's not yours?
I guess I'm confused as to what you're referring to. You're talking about the compressor station Hugo? Yes, so the compressor station on 180th, just south of that, on a landlord's property there, that is our compressor station, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Is there a reason that you couldn't have those on the same site?
The valve setting and the, no. So when we run a, a line like this, it's a loop line. So we have to reconnect it back to the system. And this is the location that the engineers chose to reconnect it into the two existing lines that we have already to provide the additional capacity downstream.
Thank you.
Any, anything else you'd like to add?
I have no additional.
We may have questions for you later, so thank you for your time. This is a public hearing. We ask if you'd like to speak to this application. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, as well as write your name and address so we have a permanent record. Spend a couple of minutes telling us your thoughts on this application. When we have heard from everybody, we will bring it back to the planning commission and close the public hearing. So it will open the public hearing at 7:58 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application?
My name, my name is Byron Zievel. I live just north of where the pipeline is going to go on the corner of 180th and July Avenue. The information I received was a little on the late side. I'm a little ticked off about this. I got it about a week ago. Given me not much time to prep, prepare or to analyze stuff. This is going to impact my value of my property because I can hit that fence they're talking about with a rock from my property. Pretty close to me, which I'm not happy about. It's got to come up above ground and put valves in there and, and a quite a big footprint of where this is at. It, I don't know why it couldn't have been done down by the pumping station where it's at. Just moving it down is going to disturb quite a few neighbors around me with their property too. You've also just dropped my value of my property significantly. They will hear from my lawyers. I'm not happy with that. I have not a whole lot else to check on because I'm going to have to do some more checking on this. Like I said, I got the news on this a little late. And you've already said you've had a hearing a week or two ago?
We had a, a neighborhood meeting. And just for the record, we did send notice out March, March 30th was when we sent them out, so.
I'm afraid I did not get any.
I.
Anyone else?
Quite a few other neighbors didn't get any notice on this at all.
Yeah, I, I can't attest to the mail service, but I can attest that we did send them out.
Well, I'm not happy with it.
Abby, what is the radius from the site that you send letters out?
I believe a thousand feet.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application?
Hello? Good evening. My name is Richard Jelfs, homeowner of 18150 July Ave., North Forest Lake. Recently bought the property four or five months back. Love the property, love the area. It's beautiful. Got the wildlife. Was very excited to move out of northeast Minneapolis and all the, the lifestyle that that now, now entails. But location of this here proposed valve station is right outside my front driveway, an area that is currently an open field. Since I moved in there, I've seen deer, turkeys. It's an area like everywhere else where wildlife roams. Judging by Mr. Carwash conversation, you know, visu- visualness and impact on that, matters inside town. It should matter for us outside of town as well. Again, forty by thirty is a pretty big footprint of this chain link that is now pristine, beautiful land. You're going underneath a lake, a waterway. This is a holding station. So what's a big gas can? It's, it's a bomb. There's definitely a safety hazard with the fact that being in construction, if plumbing or gas lines leak, those happen at valves. They happen at fittings. Well, this is a valve fitting location for a very big, mile-long natural gas facility that is in the middle of five houses. It's, it's surrounded by houses. So we're going to put this kind of, you know. I'm sure they'll tell you that there's meters. They monitor the gas flow. Everything is safe. It's all gravy. Well, I'm sure Exxon would say that about their shipping tanks as well, but accidents happen. Much like my neighbors around me, they'd have to not only witness it, suffer again the, the devaluation of property. Big purchase for me out there, ten acres. And I was very happy for it, but a very big investment. And I'm glad to be there, glad to stay there. But to see that value drop for, for their gain is saddening. And then also wasn't aware of the compressors, compression station, compressing station down the road. Just hanging out when that is in operation, it does sound like shotguns going off repetitively. Took me a long time. I thought that people were out there shooting guns, which I'm not opposed to by any means, but as long as it's being done safely. But that's what this compress, the station down the road sounds like is just bang, bang, bang. And so not only can we not enjoy the peacefulness already of the area, but now we've got visual deterrent and then safety concerns. You know, if there were an accident, what would happen? How big is that blast zone? So those are my thoughts and concerns, and I would be in opposition of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak to this application?
My name is Bruce Bain. I live on 180th Street, which is right around the corner from this proposed project. I object so far to the exclusion of homeowners who weren't going to get money. They have already paid money to homeowners, modified some of their property. They have flags that already detailed how it's going to happen. And they don't have a permit yet. I have in front of me a document that I got, which is a drawing that I received from, I forgot your name.
Abby Whitman.
From Abby Whitman. This was because in direct result to this letter, I received the letter from the Hugo Post Office, which is notoriously slow. And I got it on April 4th. And I was reading it. And unfortunately, on the date that was planned, the 10th, I couldn't attend. But what caught my attention was, a year or so prior, a young lady knocked on the door, said that she was doing some field work for Northern, whatever it is, pipeline company, and wanted to know how I would feel if a pipeline went through my house, my yard. And I looked, and I looked, and I said, well, my septic tank is here. I got these wonderful oaks here. That is wetlands over there. And you tell me how you're going to do it, but knock yourself out. Never heard back from them until this letter arrived. And what I, I'm surprised about is that, and I, it's Susan, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I really appreciated your comments on the size of the sign, although I really like Mr. Carwash. Is that, when I looked at this, my first question to Abby was, show me the elevation. Have any of you seen this document?
Just for the record, he's showing the site plan that I've got up on the screen right now.
That was in our, in our package, yeah.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to go back to the microphone. Because we're broadcasting live too.
Oh, sorry.
We don't want to miss a word.
What? Which side? Okay. On this, it details a car, a guard, guard raid details, drawing page 1113. Do you have that?
I'm not sure if they do. I would have to check back, but at the moment, I'm.
Okay, so then I'll go on to the next one. Do you have the one that's the drawing for the fence detail? DWG, page 114.
Sir, the, the city made a determination a while back not to include every single one of the engineering drawings.
Well, this isn't, this is no different than the Mr. Carwash sign because this thing in my mind sits too close to the road. I sit on the Hugo side of the road. Hugo would not let me build such a fence right on the edge of my property like this one is. And I think it's reasonable for you to make the same consideration, what that fence looks like. No one wants to have a project in their backyard. All of you have to consider, how's that going to benefit the next person? How does it benefit ourselves? So as I looked at this, had I been given any amount of time to look at it, I would have been requesting a setback further from there, a berm put up in front of it, just like they have over on Highway 35E, where you built all those houses. The developer put a very nice berm right along there. There should be a berm to separate visually that fence. The fence is there not for beauty. It's there to keep people out. Wouldn't you agree, Steve? So the idea is that that looks ugly. All right. I get where my neighbors just moved in, and it is beautiful. And this thing sits exactly on the corner, not close to the corner, exactly on the corner, creating an higher traffic volume. I don't know, two cars, one car? But it dumps right down the driveway that sits and comes right out on the corner. So you have an east-west road and a north-south road that tee, and you have another one. Me, I would have put the driveway into theirs at the other end so they wouldn't be accessing it right from the corner. But that's me. And I would have wanted to have the time to have reviewed all of this. But in my conversation this morning, or this afternoon, with your planning department, was that this is not something that they have. From my neighbor who sold the property, or gave him some cross-references, easements, they had an agreement over two years ago. My other two neighbors, when I talked with them, who's the pipelines going underneath it, said, yeah, we've already got our checks. Okay, because they're going to lose the use of their property for this year. Well, and I'm thinking, well, how, I just get this thing, and they, they can talk across the street. Somebody knocked on my door to ask me if I minded it. And why wouldn't they send somebody back and say, hey, we're a little bit further down the path line? So I don't know exactly when the planning department first got this. But no one wants to have it in their backyard. I think you could all. I think you could almost agree that that's a true statement, and you have to come up with what's reasonable with everyone. The people that live there, that have to look at it, drive by it, versus what's the intent use. Steven Martinez suggested to me, "Well, that's something that you should've taken up with the Federal Energy Regulation Committee." Well, I'd never heard of them. And I consider myself relatively intelligent, so I said, "Where are they, Washington DC?" "Oh, that's right, I was just there." So it's not something I would, I would think to, but now I will. I also did inquire of the Rice Creek Watershed District, because it goes underneath there. And I happen to be a member of the Sierra Club, and my good conservative friend and I, we argue all the time. And I had, I had given money to a defense clause in the state of Massachusetts, in the city, oh, I forgot it. Where the issue was that there was a natural gas pipe line going underneath. The methane was leaking out of it and killed all the trees. And the response from the, from the pipeline company was, "Well, that could've happened for a variety of reasons." And yet, the map showed clearly, pipeline, dead trees. Oh, sure, could've been the cars, could've been the traffic, could've been the dogs peeing on it. But my point is that I don't feel I was given an adequate amount of time to address this and try to overcome my resistance to having something in my backyard. I'm willing to do it, but I think that there should be a berm. So if it was, that it says in this last line, that you're gonna, um, how's it, ba-ba-ba-ba, um, that you will approve, make a final decision to approve or deny. I don't know if I want you to deny it, I, but I certainly don't want you to approve it. I want you to sit down and talk to how to make this look good, and not a barbed wire fence like it's some Gestapo thing where you've got people on the inside. That's what I want you to do. And I want vegetation that's consistent with native flowers and plants, that's my Sierra Club coming in. Sorry for preaching, but Susan, I think you were dead on. I love Mr. Car Wash, but a twenty-five-foot sign on that street was inconsistent. And I'm hoping that you take that same viewpoint and say, "Does it have to be right that many feet on the street? Can't you just move it back and put a berm so that you're not looking at this barbed wire fence?" And I still think the driver should be on the other side, but that's up to you. So I would hope that they and you can work on something that you can come up with an alternative facing to that street, so that doesn't get me to wound up. So, my neighbor, Byron, and his wife, they, they're not gonna look out and see this god-awful monstrosity. And I, I guarantee you, I know him. He will be talking to your county, the appraiser, and say, "You won't get as much tax dollars of him." So make it nice, please. Thank you very much for listening to me. I don't know if I need to, I need to sign in?
Yes, please.
Okay. Oh, and by the way, my last name was Bain, but I'm no relation to your mayor.
It would've been okay if you were.
Sir, how long have you lived in that neighborhood, if you don't mind me asking?
I've lived there, uh, since nineteen ninety-three. So, and I've seen so many changes and lots of fu- good friends, wonderful new neighbors just moved in.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Meanwhile, I'll ask, uh, do we have anyone online who wishes to speak to this application?
Uh, the only person we'd have is leave Ericson again, and if, if you wanna unmute and let us know if you wanna speak to this, otherwise you can just stay silent, I don't know.
Any emails to be read in?
Uh, no, there are no emails to be entered into the record.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening, my name's Emily Jelson, like they've said before. We're new to the neighborhood, um, I'm Adam, also known as Richard. Uh, we're at the address of one eight, one, one eight, one five zero July Ave North. And I'd like to just share with you real quickly why we moved there. Uh, we are pretty much the younger kids on the block, we stick out like a sore thumb. Um, but that's kinda what we were looking for, a place where we could grow old, have a family, be safe, look at the wildlife, kinda go back to how we were both born and raised. Um, I come from northern Minnesota, and I've tried to run away from the pipeline. Um, being, being of the culture that I am, of Native American, I've been robbed and robbed. Uh, you've seen the headlines, and I thought for sure that for once in my life of thirty years, I'd be able to have an easier life and be able to have a decent family in a safe and quiet area. Um, from what's being proposed here with this pipeline plan is ultimately like my worst nightmare. Um, as previously stated by Richard, there's very loud bangs from the other facility that's right down the road, off in Hugo. Um, it took us a while to figure out, like he also said, but it's also a nuisance, uh, can't really help that, it's a different town. It is what it is, but with the fact that this eyesore would be directly in front of our driveway, it's taking away umpteen feet, yards in front of us of what we get to wake up and, you know, start our life and, and, and whole day through. Um, we wake up looking at like a jail cell. And I'm not really quite sure if having a nice berm and all these pretty flowers would make it look great. That's like putting whipped cream and a cherry on top of, you know, like an ugly cookie. It's really not gonna go far. Um, I'm worried personally about having a family there now, I'm worried of these gas leaks. I talked to Steve at the meeting a couple weeks ago, and I asked him about the last, um, pipeline problem and how it blew up, and he was quick to talk about it, but he was also quick to run away from the fact that it was really hard for their company to catch a blow-up before it actually happened. Ultimately, from what he had said, um, they didn't know until it blew. I don't know how you guys would feel, but I personally would not wanna raise a family, I wouldn't wanna place my kids or multiple houses on top of a bomb. Uh, there's already one right down the road, there's gotta be some way to figure things out that don't drill through this water and, and affect all of us around. We got the older folks here that are trying to live a nice life, you have us coming in trying to follow suit with what they have been doing. We're just looking for something quiet, we're looking for something of what we thought we bought. Um, our property value would go down, we'd be losing a ton of savings, and based off of what Steve had told me, um, when we'd scoped out the area, a lot of the information that is quote, "public." Um, I'll, I'll try to go verbatim of what Steve said, you'd have to click on a link on a link through this website, basically, you know, it's like a black hole. He, he said, uh, basically along the lines of, "Good luck finding it," but yep, you'll find it eventually. I, that's not very public to me if I have to grab a, you know, a backhoe to find it. Just not comfortable with that, it seems to be very, um, blinding. It's too much work to have to have something be public, if it is public, and that they wanna be proud to come up here and show face for the Northern Pipeline. Um, there's just a lot of hiding behind, and I'm gonna personally hide behind the fact that we bought this land, and it's now becoming something that it, that was a lie. Um, and I don't appreciate that, and I'd hope you guys would consider that too, and hear, hear the whole, I don't know, the entire neighborhood here of July and a hundred and eighty-fifth, I believe. Um, there's not a whole lot of us, but there's enough of us, and I hope that you hear our, our voices. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? I'll ask one more time, does anyone else wish to speak to this application?
Uh, hi, I'm Ed Warro. Um, I live right next to Julie, and yeah, she's absolutely right. This place is, I've been there for thirty-five years. And I've never, never, never thought twice about whether that was a dangerous situation. But now my attention has been drawn to the fact that, yeah, this can be a very dangerous, dangerous situation. Yeah, Bruce said, yeah, you can put a berm around it and put flowers around it and cover the thing up, but it's the same scenario. It, it boils back down to the same, same, same speech. So, yeah, I'm not crazy about this whole thing, I support them totally. They're new to the neighborhood, I'm old in the neighborhood, I'm not gonna be there that many more years. But, the next people, hopefully my kids, are gonna buy the, buy the house from us. I'd like it to stay as pristine as, as it can be. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak to this application? I'll ask one last time if anyone else wishes to speak to this application. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing at eight twenty-one PM. Commissioners?
Sorry, I forget the sign. Chair, I get it, I'm a little bit north where the high wires and the radio tower are. And, um, and when I bought out there, I had no intention of staring at a radio tower every morning. Um, it, and, and I, I, I get the feeling of frustration and betrayal. Um, Abby, as I remember some of my right-of-way, they have certain abilities to to be there and to take property, and to, to you, to have this use as a public benefit. Uh, but we can prescribe screening, and we can request some advanced monitoring, or, um, I don't wanna say offensive, but screening and, and, and monitoring. Is that something that we are able to do as conditions of a conditional use permit?
Yep, so for the record, a conditional use permit, the use itself is, is permitted. But we have the right, the city has the right to impose reasonable conditions that bear rough proportionality to the ask. And so, as, um, something just to note for the record, there were conditions that staff has been recommending. Including in those conditions, I think there's a half dozen of them, I don't remember exactly, let me see, eight maybe? Um, two of them specifically about fencing, but one of them would be that the fencing would incorporate slating for visual screening. Um, so staff did at least look at the, um, at options for additional screening than an open chain-link fence. But yes, to answer your question, Commissioner Young, we can place reasonable conditions on it. Um, things like monitoring, I, um, we, I would just caution the commission that we don't necessarily try to create conditions that we can't enforce. So, that we aren't maybe the most skilled on, but we can definitely do some research if we end up detailing it, um, if needed.
And, and at the beginning, you did say that staff is recommending that we table?
Staff is recommending that we table. Um, there are eight conditions right now, we need to explore, um, just, uh, staff isn't proposing any additional conditions, but that we explore either modification to the existing, to ensure the applicant has the right to freely maintain, um, without necessarily impacting the use permit, or to draft an additional resolution that would separate the conditional use of floodplain from the other requirements on the, and improvements.
Mr. Chair, with respect to number seven, slat, slating is not appropriate in that location. Um, vegetative, um, and again, a deciduous vegetation is probably not appropriate there either for the visuals. Um, I understand the concern. And, you know, I bought my property for the same reason that y'all did. And, of course, I wouldn't mind a few of the deer to exit someplace else, but, um, I, I, I do understand the concern, I, I truly do. And, Abby, I think that the natural gas ends at Keystone and Two Hundred and Second. That's where the, the nearest natural gas stop-out is for that area, for, for residential use.
Oh, okay.
Um, but there is, there is a public good here that the city also has to balance.
You are correct.
Chair, if I might just add for the record, um, there, the properties in this area, the roadways are not platted. So the land does go to usually the typical center line of the road, um, which is why the property can, you know, the fencing and that sort of thing is, what I would say, close to the travel roads. I don't know what kind of ditches are along through here, um, but to be able to get birmingham in and actually have our adequate drainage and those sorts of things, I think would, um, I'm not sure that that could be accomplished. The other thing is, I would, um, caution the commission if screening, uh, with vegetation is something the commission wants to explore, that we, uh, don't necessarily impose any specific type of screening. We do have under, large underground piping in the area that we wouldn't necessarily want to impede upon now or in the future with vegetation. Now, that's not to say that there might not be something that could be developed, I just would encourage the commission to, if there was direction provided to explore additional screening, that it's, um, that we leave it up to the applicant potentially to develop that screening plan.
Cause Abby, the, the current, there's current pipeline going nearby this?
There are two pipelines currently in the area that cross these properties, I can re-bring that up. Um, those pipelines are, um, connecting into this utility substation, so if you give me-
In Hugo?
Um, no, they are, um, they will connect to this, um, facility here in, in our jurisdiction.
Oh, okay.
The valving station, give me just a second. I, we're still learning how to display everything. So these are the two existing, I think they're twenty-inch pipes, I must-
Excuse me.
Wide, they're about twenty-four feet apart. They are currently in the ground right now, so we're proposing another one that's gonna come up and come in, and all three pipes get looped together.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for staff or comments? Kevin?
I would just make a motion that we table this, uh, for further discussion.
I have a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second of the tabling.
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-negotiable motion, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So when we table the application, um, we made no decision tonight. So it is going to go back to the city staff, work with the applicant. Um, if they've heard your concerns, there's some other issues that they're dealing with, and then it will come back to the Planning Commission for a decision. Now, we've already had the public hearing tonight. Um, so I don't think we take, we don't give notice because there won't be another, um, public hearing, so you won't be getting anything mailed to you. This is, this is, I know, this is how the system works in the state. Um, so my advice is, the, the Planning Commission minutes, right when you get on the screen, it'll say agenda and minutes. And, and you click on that, scroll down to Planning Commission, we're the last ones, cause it goes alphabetical. It's not, we're lowest on the totem pole, but it's, we're, we're last. And then you can click right on the packet right there, and the packet will describe if it's right on the first page, what's coming before us at that meeting. And it'll, then the information will follow on the following pages. Cause everything we, what we read up here is public record before the meeting even comes. So we meet the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, and the packet usually comes out Friday before the meeting. So our, our next meeting is sometime in May.
May tenth?
May tenth.
And I will note for the record, Chair Gerardo, we've already discussed this with the applicant, and would be aiming to bring that back to you at the May tenth meeting. So the packet would be distributed- So the packet would be distributed in May?
Sixth or so, fifth.
Sixth, something like that on the city council. I also put my business card on the, uh, table there. Anybody's welcome to email me. And I certainly will provide you with the link to the packet once the packet materials have been distributed.
Yes.
Staff, um, cedar, choke cherry, jun Berry, beauty berry. Those are all native shrubs that are shallow rooted that would provide good screening and are appropriate to the landscaping in that area.
So, um, I did want to ask Chair Gerard, I know it's a non-debatable motion. I did not, I did not hear this commission direct staff to look into additional screening. I heard Commissioner Young express that slats are not acceptable, but, um, I do think that we would need to have some more direction. Now, the last thing I want to do is walk away and try to work with an applicant, but not have necessarily felt like that was direction from the commission. So.
Unfortunately, another action is not on the agenda, so we cannot take another action.
I don't know that I'm necessarily seeking action, but I just, it would be helpful to know if that was direction of this commission to explore additional screening.
Mr. Chair, could you ask the commission members if there may be consensus to explore screening?
You're always much more eloquent. Commissioners, was there a consensus, we are looking for more screening, different fencing, et cetera? Or that we're good with what you've already read? Remi?
You're looking for consensus?
I'm looking for an opinion one way or the other.
For the city to look into other methods of screening. Yes, I would, I would be in favor of the city staff looking into other methods of screening, working with the-
Applicant.
With the applicant on.
Okay. Other comments? Susan? It sounds like you're in for more screening. I'm in for more screening.
And, and as I said, there's, there are a variety of shallow rooted natives that would not only provide habitat, but would, would provide very good screening.
Um, with that being said, with, we're looking at additional things for screening, that's not necessarily saying we're going to approve the project. It's just saying we're looking at other things and we can still, because I don't want you guys to feel like we're not hearing you. We are hearing you. We are hearing everything really loud and clear. And so we want to vet this for the best interests of the community that this project is suggested for and for the best interests of the community abroad. Because we are walking that fine line with, people don't really want it in their backyard and we get that. But what are, what are all the options? And this might be an option that we have to consider when we consider the whole project. So that's what I want to say about going along with this vegetation.
Any last comments? Anything else you need, Abby?
I have enough traction and we'll see you back here with this in a couple of weeks.
All right. Thank you all for coming this evening. You're welcome to stay for the next event. Sir, you have a question?
Well, I'm still getting, my neighbor had come and brought me the last question that showed they were building a valve station. The original letters I got from the people, it was only a week ago, was it was going to be an underground pipeline. Boy, there's somebody dropped the ball on something there. An underground pipeline is a hell of a lot different than a valve stand standing up in the air. And we didn't get that last. My neighbor brought it over to me and showed us, you know what's going on? I said, no, I had no idea. A little upset with this. And I don't know who the fault is. Wasn't it, it was not in the package. Nobody else got it.
Sir, the notice you received is a notice of the meetings. And I acknowledge and I apologize that you may not have received it in the timely fashion that you had hoped. We do try very hard to provide notice, not the entire application. It is up to property owners to come and educate themselves. I will provide them to anybody. If you shoot me an email, stop in the city hall, whatever you need to do. And I will take full responsibility, however it may be. But we do try our best to briefly describe the project, let people know something's happening. And that's the best we can do to be able to keep our projects moving forward.
And the entire packet that the planning commission got tonight would be under the agendas. It'd be the top one because it's, whatever today is, April something or another, twenty-six. And would be, I think it starts at about page forty or forty-five out of the eighty pages. You're more than welcome to see any additional information that we saw. So again, I want to thank you all for coming.
And our next agenda item is about wetland banking.
So we will move on to six C, to public hearing also for ordinance number seven-two-four, amendment to the wetland banking and land usage, usage of a conservancy, conservancy district. You guys throw that word in because I can't pronounce.
Conservancy.
And Abby, you're presenting?
I am. Thank you, Chair Gerard, and members of the commission. On June thirteenth of last year, the city council enacted a one-year moratorium to determine if wetland banking was permitted in our zoning code, whether or not we'd allow, like to allow for wetland banking and if we'd like to allow it under what conditions and where. February of March this year, staff worked with the commission and the city council on drafting the enclosed ordinance based on the discussions and direction provided to staff. As written, wetland banking would only be permissible in the conservancy zoning district by, um, wetland, and just, I believe it's wetland enhancement. Some of these driving factors have included that greater than thirty-five percent of the city is public waters inventory. We determined through our land development processes that when properties are determined and wetland delineations are done, that more property is typically encumbered by wetland than what is actually known through the national wetland inventory. Therefore, there's generally, um, an assumption can be made that we have greater than thirty-five percent of our, of our lands are public waters. New wetland acres is going to have a significant impact on how the city develops in the future. Wetland banks are placed in conservation easements in perpetuity and, um, they would not contribute to the tax base despite needing some public services such as maybe emergency services or road access for future maintenance. We've delineated the conservancy district to provide for protection of these areas. And therefore, wetland banks in those areas would keep with that zoning district's purpose. I also want to note for the record, if it wasn't clear in my, um, staff report, there's nothing in this ordinance that prohibits the restoration of wetlands, the preservation of wetlands, the enhancement of wetlands. What we're saying is there's certain activities that we don't want to allow for wetland banking. The act of, um, creating new wetlands, enhancing new wetlands, restoring wetlands for the purpose of monetary gain. That is what we're saying in this ordinance. Since release of the ordinance, Bowser, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, that's a Minnesota state agency, has, um, provided just some comment that we don't reference the Wetland Conservation Act, that the purpose statements, um, might want to be reworded. And there's, uh, our references to federal mitigation rules isn't consistent with the water, the Wetland Conservation Act. So when the city is considering a zoning ordinance text amendment, we need to see that they're consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, the zoning code, and that there's a general public benefit. So, um, an ordinance such as this is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it's balancing out our natural resource goals and our land development goals. It's not necessarily weighting one over another, but we're taking these equally in tandem and we're saying these are both important. And though we want to continue to protect natural resources, we also want to encourage land development and do those things in unison together. Consistency with the zoning code, it is consistent with the intent of the zoning code to define and have greater clarification where certain land uses are allowed. Additionally, when we look at zoning text amendments, zoning ordinance amendments, we really want to make sure that we're not creating a bunch of non-conformities. And there would only be one non-conformity, Ferryview Farms, would become a legal, non-conforming wetland bank within the city. The general public benefit, um, to the city as a whole, again, we balance all these different special interests. It's one of the hardest things this commission has to do. You take the entire comprehensive plan, you look at all the policies and objectives, you weigh them out, and you figure out what is in the general public benefit. This will allow individual property owners within the conservancy district the opportunity to wetland bank through various means. But also, it's really balancing out wetland preservation throughout the rest of the community, not allowing for bankland, banking, but also allowing for land development. So, um, staff notes in the, um, the staff reports that the recommend, um, Bowser has advised there's some inconsistencies. Essentially, wetland permit restoration is a permitted activity within the state, in which you can bank. The code that's being proposed doesn't say you can't continue to restore wetlands. We're just saying, if you're going to restore wetlands, you can't do that and get credit and sell those credits within our community. We are saying you can enhance wetlands in the conservancy district and you can sell those credits for a profit. Now, we acknowledge that the state law doesn't say wetland enhancement is a banking credit applicable, um, ta, activity. However, we believe that drafting our ordinance consistent with federal regulations will help us in the event the state changes their regulations, that we don't have to necessarily retweak our ordinance. Now, all of that said, um, staff is going to go back to its original recommendation that, um, we've consistently noted. We believe that, um, and this is a, a, a legal council, engineering council, community development staff administration, we believe that there should be a prohibition on wetland banking within the city. We do believe that, um, there is too much of a risk to the developable land acreage within the community. And so therefore, we would recommend, um, you consider approving the ordinance, but removing the allowance of wetland banking within the conservancy district. Now, that being said, um, staff does note you can also direct staff to better align the ordinance with seven-twenty-four and recommend the city council approve a modified ordinance. But, um, I think I told Chair Gerard that we wanted to actually recommend-
Denial.
Um, denial, yes. So it would be the first motion to approve with the, without the allowance of wetland banking within the conservation district. So, um, are there questions?
Questions of staff? Susan?
When you were introducing it, you said that, um, you wanted to avoid the addition of non-taxable land in the city that would not be subject to property taxes. So that would be you will come forward soon with a prohibition on additional churches, additional schools, other kinds of property that would be non-taxable in the city?
Commissioner Young, I think that that's a, a step on a reach. I think that we should stick to wetland banking tonight.
Then my concern is that I would not be able, on my agriculturally zoned property, which has significant wetland on it, to enhance my property and develop it as a wetland bank to be able to use my property to its fullest and best use. And I have a real concern that the city would be limiting my ability to develop the wetland areas on my property for banking purposes to be able to do a better job of recovering value from my property in those areas that I can't farm, that I can't graze because of the wetlands. And so I, my concern is that only in conservancy districts can wetland banking be done and not in agriculturally zoned areas that could not be developed otherwise. For instance, where I am, the properties cannot be additionally developed for residential, industrial, or commercial uses due to covenants and, and legal restrictions.
And, and the flip side, Susan, if, if we opened it up to agriculture, it's everybody's ag property. You're taking stuff possibly out of the MXR one for development.
Quite frankly, some of the Highland areas that are, that are in ag now, you've already got that in MXR. You've already done that. That is what the comp plan says.
Other questions of staff? We don't have an applicant, correct?
Uh, no, the city is the applicant.
All right. This is a public hearing. We asked if you wish to speak to this application, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Uh, and then spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this, um, new, this ordinance change. And so we will open the public hearing at eight forty-five P M. Does anyone wish to speak to this application?
Good evening, Chair Gerard and, uh, planning commissioners. My name is Steve Schmaltz. I live at twenty-two, seven-thirty-six Hayward Avenue North in Forest Lake. We've lived here since, uh, twenty-oh-two. I'm here actually tonight representing the watershed district, and I'll talk more about that in a second, and, uh, the taxpayers. So I have a handout so we get the data correct. Can we take it?
To the left.
To your left. No, to your left, sorry. Can we take these?
How you doing tonight?
Does, uh, do we have one for the, um, for Abby?
There's one for Abby in there also. So I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the watershed district. So I'm going to just take a couple of minutes, since this is a very important topic and a very complicated topic, by the way, uh, to talk about the watershed district. It's a Comfort Lake Forest Lake watershed district. We're an L G U, just like the city. We have taxing authority. We have, um, eleven employees, full-time employees. We have five board managers, and I'm the president, which, which manages the, uh, the operation. We've been around since twenty-twenty-two. Came out of a lawsuit from Washington County against the city for all the stormwater running down into Comfort Lake. So that's how this organization was set up. In the last ten years, we have partnered very heavily with the city and done a lot of large projects. We have over three, four million dollar construction budgets some years because of the projects we do. And I could talk a little bit about that later on. So, um, we're really involved with wetlands and it's a very complicated topic. So what I'd like to do this evening is just to mention the fact that, and I'm here because we have not had an opportunity to really work with the city on putting this proposal together. So that's what my main objective is tonight, is to ask for some additional time to make sure you get input from all the partners that are involved with this, and there's a lot more than just us. So I'll just start off by saying that we first, we were aware of this occurring about a year, about ten months ago. We, we asked the city if we could work with them. Nothing much came out of that. So the last time we heard anything was in April fourteenth, when we got the announcement on seven-twenty-four. So, um, the first point I want to make is that there are many other partners that are involved with wetlands in the city area. There's the city, there's the watershed district, there's Bowser, uh, Board of Soil and Water Resources, Rice Creek Watershed District, Washington Conservation District. And all these organizations have authority and responsibilities for managing wetlands in the city. So it's just not the city. So all these people should have an opinion and a different perspective on the situation. And it's important, I think, that the city get all those perspectives before they make a final decision. Now, as far as I know, Ben Myers from Bowser is the only one that's submitting anything right now. And I think Abby mentioned that. And we're in the process of submitting our formal request through a letter, but we haven't done that yet because of the timing situation. So that was the first point. The second point is that there's some technical confusion over the science and what you can and can't do with wetlands. So I'm just going to read this. "At a technical level, it appears that there are some differences in understanding regarding what types of land may be suitable for wetland restoration. Furthermore, the unusual step of creating an ordinance to discourage the restoration of a farmed or degraded wetland may undermine the regional function of wetlands for flood prevention and water quality." I'm going to give you a quick lesson on wetlands. Wetlands are the kidneys of the body of the landscape of this community. Wetlands are like your kidneys. They clean all the pollutants and the bad stuff out of the storm waters to keep our streams, rivers, and, uh, and, um, wetlands clean. So if you remove the wetlands, you have no protection. The water quality takes a big dive. So that's the first important, that's why they're so important to protect them. Also, I want to point out the flood protection. Minnesota and Upper Midwest, the large, largest decrease of wetland acres is linked to increased flooding. So the flooding we have right now is because we've ditched everything. The water doesn't sit in wetlands. It runs right into the rivers and then right downstream. So the more wet- So the more wetlands you have, the better flood protection you have, which is something this city should be concerned about because 10-inch rains are now the norm and not every hundred years. The third point is that we have always done a lot of large projects for water quality improvement, and so I want to talk a little bit about that. For wetland acres within the watershed district, there are potential opportunities both to provide flood protection and to preserve or improve water quality in Forest Lake and other surface waters through the restoration of degraded or farmed wetland acreage. The district's efforts to date have always included a cost-benefit analysis to maximize return on investment for taxpayers. The ability to recoup project costs by establishing and selling wetland, wetland bank credits generated by such projects is an important funding option. Prohibiting this project revenue alternative could impose greater project costs on local taxpayers and make some, make such, some beneficial projects unfeasible. So again, this is an important tool that we have. If that's excluded from us, it restricts our ability to provide the best value to the taxpayers' dollars, which is something we really pride ourselves. We're the smallest watershed district in the state, but in the last six years, we have gained more grant dollars, over $6 million, than any other watershed district in the state. So we're very good at getting money to reduce taxpayers' costs directly. The last point is that we've also, looking at flood protection, have done some larger wet scale analysis, I mean, wetland analysis, and we want to make sure that this 724 doesn't impact that future work. So several years ago, the watershed district inventoried sites for potential larger-scale wetland restoration within the watershed district. We should like to review this and other information with the city and other partners in order to ensure that the city is protecting its developable land without creating unanticipated and unnecessary obstacles to achieving our shared water quality and flood prevention and ecological health goals. So that's why we need to work together. We have a lot of these wetlands that are not in the conservancy area. So if they're outside the conservancy area, are they important to flood control? And do we want to make sure we protect them and don't, don't lose them to develop land? So that's why we have to work together on this and, and anticipate those problems before they come up later on. So on behalf of the watershed board of managers, I'm requesting that the planning commission consider postponing this matter briefly to allow for a collaborative review of the need for proposed ordinance, its potential unintended impacts, and whether it might be amended to avoid such future impacts. And I think we can do this and still make the June timing that the city's looking for to pass this. I know you have a year's leeway on this project. And I think Abby has written, or staff has written some, some good analysis of all the positive points she rattles off, but I think if we have the opportunity to tell the other side of the story on each of those points, it'll open up a whole new vision of what this whole thing is really about. And I think you owe to yourselves and certainly to the taxpayers to able to get the full story on how this thing should move forward so it can benefit all parties involved. And there's just not one party involved, there's more than just the city. So that's what we're asking for right now. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. We've been kind of rushed with this thing. We tried to get a formal meeting today, but we couldn't get a forum to get it through. So I'm just here commenting on some, some potential issues that we see and looking for the opportunity to work more closely with the city. City's been our big partner. We did, we, Shields Lake was impaired. The city had responsibility for solving that problem. The watershed district now has cleaned up Shields Lake. It's coming off the impaired list. We worked closely with the city on a very sophisticated and improved street sweeping program for water quality. We worked with the city to get the grants that paid for your equipment. So, you know, we've done a lot of good things with the city, and the city's helped us a lot with property use and so forth. So again, I would just like to see that relationship continue on this important topic because wetlands are easily overlooked. And I mean, just think if you were going to take all your, all your parks and you want to, you want to develop that now into a suburbs. Wetlands are as important as parks, it's just on the other side of the coin. So, and I think a lot of citizens feel that way also. So those are my comments. I can hopefully can answer any questions. By the way, we have Manager Anderson here with us. Manager Anderson actually started the WMO and the, and the watershed district 22 years ago. So she's been past president many years, and she has a lot more history than I'll ever forget. So glad to have her here this evening.
Just a correction, WMO, Forest Lake WMO was started before the district. It had been around for almost 20 years, I think.
But you were involved with that too, weren't you?
No, no.
Oh, you were?
No. Just the Comfort Lake Forest.
Chair, or Susan?
The project you're doing on 200th, is that a strict water quality improvement with the, I think that's an iron, sand iron system on 200th Street?
That's an iron, iron sand filter.
Yeah, it's the iron sand filter. Is that considered a restoration? Is that a banking or is that just a straight water?
That's a straight water quality project, yeah. The third Lake Pond on top part of Lake Three would be a restoration of a degraded wetland.
Okay, thank you.
Basin area, yeah. And we just completed a big one right next to Wyoming.
Yeah.
Well, all that big pond is out right now. It's a lot deeper than it should be. But before we did that, the water ran right through the ditch and right down the Sunrise River. Now it's going to be in there two or three months before it gets out and goes into the sunrise. We're forcing it, we're recreating the wetland by reducing the ditching and running the water through there again, giving it more dwell time in there so sediment can settle out, the phosphorus can be eaten by the plants, create new wildlife opportunities. It's, they're quite, quite, quite workable.
Thanks, Steve. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Abby, do we have anybody online?
The only other person we have is Councilman Ray Leaf Erickson. Leaf, if you'd like to speak, just go ahead and unmute yourself. It looks like he's remaining muted. So he might just be here observing this evening.
Pardon me?
He might just be here observing this evening.
And do we have any emails to be read in?
No, we do not.
Thank you. I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish, else wish to speak to this application? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:57 PM. Bring it back to the commissioners for discussion, questions of staff?
Chair Gerard?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I just clarify something? I think that there might be some confusion. The city is not prohibiting wetland restoration. The city is not prohibiting wetland creation. What we would be prohibiting is using these acts for the act of banking. We will still continue to promote the preservation of wetlands in the community, the enhancement of them, the restoration of them. We still allow for mitigation for impact within the community. We just, it's the act of creating, restoring, preserving wetlands to create, to have a monetary benefit from them.
So I want to make sure I understand this correctly, Abby. So by wetland banking, let's say you have somebody who had, in the conservancy district who's got 50 acres, and he wants to create, or she wants to create 25 acres of wetland to sell for credits to developers. That's what we're looking, that's what the city does not want to do, correct?
We do not want new wetlands restored or created with, we, with city staff is concerned that the allowance of new wetlands created will increase wetland acreage within the community, and doing that for a profit for activities that can be occurring outside the community, there isn't necessarily a community benefit. We don't have the ability to determine, we have no mechanism to be able to say who can bank and who cannot. So anybody could come in and bank in a, within the city and sell those credits outside of the city. There's no limitation to say that credits are only available for development within a city. We can't necessarily say one type of development versus another type of development or project is eligible for the certain credits that could be created. Overall, it's the monetizing of our natural resources for projects potentially outside of the city that is the concern.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
Well, if I'm hearing Steve correctly, he's just asking for more time to review the proposed ordinance and talk with city about things. And so would there, would it be in order to table this to another meeting so that can happen? Because it looks like they fully intend to get engaged with the city ASAP because they're asking only for a brief postponement and not vote on it tonight.
I would think that's an option. We do have to keep the June date in mind.
We do. Staff has built in one additional planning commission meeting before the city council's hearing, May 22nd. So we could get this on to your May 10th meeting and still potentially turn that around with an ordinance for the city council's public hearing, May 22nd. I do know that I have talked with watershed district staff. I understand that this didn't necessarily maybe get presented to their board, but I have been in discussions with staff. I understand Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, watershed district is concerned about this. I think that there probably is potentially some confusion. We will continue to allow for wetland restoration with the community. We want to preserve our natural resources. We want the kidneys of our community to function. We really do. We're not, this won't prohibit that. This is just saying we don't want there to be a monetary gain. And we understand that that could impact those agencies and landowners who do wetland restoration and look to get a gain from that. We understand that. I'm happy to have those conversations, continue those conversations with both of our watershed districts, our county conservation office, Bowser as well. We certainly have the time to table it if that's what the commission would like.
I make a motion to table this until the next meeting?
I have a motion to table, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I would have wanted an opportunity for a bit more discussion, but that's.
I'm not sure what our, I, Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to just call or show a hands there. I don't know where we sat with that.
Okay, those in favor of, said aye, raise your hand. We have one, two, three, four.
Okay.
Opposed, raise your hands. We have three.
Perfect. Motion passes first to table then, correct?
Thank you. All right, we will move to our discussion, and we will start with our council liaison. Robert?
I have nothing to add, but interesting decisions, and so appreciate the time.
Any questions at a council person this evening? All right, then we'll go to Ken.
I'll just say spring has sprung, we're getting a lot of, a lot of calls, a lot of interest in doing projects, which is great. We're very busy.
Good. Abby?
The only thing that I wanted to report is the Ingersoll Avenue concept plan did, was heard by the city council last week, and they were very much in support of the comments the city council have. We've talked with our legal staff and we've advised, I believe we've advised the applicant, but that they are welcome to submit preliminary and final plot together. That's how confident we are of that development, that it would move forward. I also want to let you know I have been in touch with a couple of new developers, looking at some of the same properties we've already looked at. So I would imagine through this summer, you might see some additional planning processes, applications come before you on properties you've passed reviewed. And then tonight, we did hold a neighborhood meeting on Shadow Creek Estates. A new development plan has been proposed, just looking at preservation of the existing stables, horse training facility, and that northeast corner that abuts Goodview Avenue. There will be subsequent applications coming forth on the western side of the property, but the property owner is really looking at these as two separate projects now moving forward. So you do have a hearing, or meetings scheduled for May 10th, which you should also note because you tabled a couple items till to that time. But you also do have a meeting in May as well. We know that there are meeting agenda items scheduled. I apologize, Commissioner Young, we couldn't get that one off the books.
I haven't missed many.
All right.
Any, and, and I'll stand for questions.
Questions for Abby? Do you need that?
No comments.
Justin?
Jeff?
No, sir.
Susan? Wetland restoration is very, very expensive, and most private landowners can't, their hearts may be in the right place, they would like to do it, but they can't afford to. And in an appropriate setting, potentially on ag land that would not otherwise be developed, it concerns me that a property owner who would want to try and recover some of their costs, not make a profit, but recover some of the costs of a wetland restoration by providing banking opportunities, would be prohibited from doing so.
Thank you. Anything else? Just a, just a note on motions. We had a couple of tables tonight, and I just want to make sure everyone's clear that once that motion hits, the discussion ends. So I just caution everyone to make sure that all the discussion's been held before someone goes to make a, a motion to table it, because again, we're, it needs to end there legally for, some group told me that, so that knows all that stuff. So just a reminder that we should really make sure that we've had all conversation, and then tables are usually fairly straightforward. So with that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you once again for participating this evening. Please go enjoy the last of winter this weekend.